It is 7 o'clock. Welcome to the first Planning Commission meeting of the year. Happy New Year, January 6, 2026. I'll call this meeting to order. I'll remind everybody that the township vision and mission, the township will maintain its rural character for years to come while managing the pace of growth, ensuring the preservation of existing neighborhoods in the natural environment, and promoting development in agreed-upon target areas that will be served for public infrastructure and utilities. Also, I want to make mention that this evening, we may have Commissioner Buller on the line. And per the Open Meetings Act, Public Act 267 of 1976, members of a public body may participate remotely, but they may not vote unless they are physically present. But again, for participation, Mr. Buller, Commissioner Buller hopefully may be joining us. So just wanted to make that specific note. With that, Secretary Markounas, the roll call, please.
Commissioner Summers.
Here.
Commissioner Woods.
Here.
Commissioner Johnson.
Present.
Commissioner Sly.
Present.
Commissioner Buller.
Here.
Commissioner Riggs.
Here.
And Commissioner Markounas.
Do we have Commissioner Buller on the line, or you're not seeing him at this point?
I do not see him.
Okay. Just thought if you see him pop up, just let me know.
Nobody does.
Okay. With that, the Pledge of Allegiance, please.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
We've reached the item on the agenda, Item E, for the election of officers and assignments. I'm going to read this excerpt, actually, from our Rules of Procedures or Bylaws. At the organizational meeting in January, the commission shall select officers, including a chairperson, a vice chairperson, secretary, and representatives to the zoning board of appeals, and joint planning commission, who shall serve for a 12-month period and who shall be eligible for another term. Nominations shall be made from the floor, and the vote shall be held immediately thereafter. A commissioner receiving a majority of votes shall be selected. Presently, the Planning Commission Chair is myself, our vice chair is Sly, and the secretary is Markounas. For the Joint Planning Commission, currently Commissioners Riggs, Woods, and myself, who has been elected as chair, serve on the Joint Planning Commission. And the zoning board of appeals, I serve on the Johnson on the Zoning Board of Appeals. Commissioners?
Can I make a motion to keep all the people in their same positions for the next year?
Is there a second?
I'll second it.
We have a motion to maintain for the 2026 year, the existing participation for the Planning Commission Chair and Vice Chair, Joint Planning Commission and Zoning Board of Appeals. Is there discussion?
Apparently, everybody wants to keep serving in the same role.
Why do you want to?
For those serving in the current roles, are there any discussion points they would like to make?
Is there anyone else that'd like to serve as a vice chair?
Yeah, absolutely, or chair, or chair.
You're doing a fantastic job.
All right. Hearing and seeing none. And by the way, thank you for that vote of confidence. Again, motion by Commissioner Riggs, seconded by Commissioner Summers. With that, I think we'll have a voice, a roll call vote, please.
Roll call vote, okay. All right. Commissioner Riggs.
Yes.
Commissioner Sly.
Yes.
Commissioner Johnson.
Yes.
Commissioner Woods.
Yes.
Commissioner Summers.
Yes.
Commissioner Markounas, yes.
All right. Motion carries. We've now reached the item on our agenda for the approval of the agenda, and I believe we do have some modifications to that.
So I'll move to approve the agenda with changes to Item Number, what is that? Item Number JC, subsection C, zoning map rea-- no, not that. It's the--
That would be it.
Well, that's one, zoning map review. We need to move that, could we move that to the new business before unfinished business, so Brent can leave after that's done, doesn't have to stay for the rest of the meeting. And also, to change the January 20 meeting for our master plan review meeting, change that to a different date, so it doesn't coincide with the Township Board meeting.
Yes, and I will repeat it as well. Is there a second?
I'll second it.
So we have a motion by Commissioner, Vice Chair Sly, seconded by Commissioner Woods. So for clarification, we are going to move Item JC, as Commissioner Sly mentioned, the zoning map review committee. We're going to move that right before communications. That way Brent doesn't, I mean, you're welcome to stay, stay for the whole meeting. And then we'll add that new business item, I think you said, before unfinished business, where we'll talk about the January 20 Planning Commission meeting that we have scheduled, because it conflicts with the Township Board meeting. Is that cleared, everybody? Somebody's going to have to make sure I don't mess that up.
Clear to me.
Okay. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, same sign. Motion carries. Thank you all very much. We've now reached our first opportunity for public comments on the agenda. This item for public comments is for agenda items only. Please do come to the podium if you have any public comments. That way, we can capture your audio, as well as video, potentially. Are there any public comments? You're welcome to come to the agenda, or to the podium. Mr. Adams?
Hello. All right. Yeah, Barry Wayne Adams, 622 West Green Street. I am addressing your JPC update item, agenda item. I'll tell you, the JPC meeting of October 14th, I was actually encouraged to see a display of authentic Americanism when I saw Steve and Joanna and Nick get up and walk out and not put up with Mr. Banfield's procedural gimmickry. And it was further encouraging at the next meeting, because I thought at the November 18th meeting, we were just going to see a replay of the headbutting that went on in the October meeting. But fortunately, Mr. Banfield caved, and Joanna got elected. And as soon as it happened, I texted out to my Confederates, the fact that Joanna got elected, and there was a great sigh of relief throughout many in the city, that things might actually be readjusted in a way that things can actually get done, that would be mutually beneficial to both the township and the city. Because it had been obvious that the township had been getting the short end of the stick in a lot of the decision-making that was going on with the Joint Planning Commission. But there seems to be a change in the wind, and it was evidenced last night with the city council meeting, in terms of the amount of citizen participation against it. Usually, I'm the only one sitting in the audience during city council meeting, maybe one or two other people, maybe Regis will be there. But this time, the place was packed, standing room only, out into the foyer. And I think with this latest effort by the city to do this environmentally destructive land grab, to try to put in this data center, has put the people in the city over the edge. You know, the tolerance of what has been going on was pushed to the limit with everything that had been going on with the Blue Oval Plan. But now that they're trying to push this data center, it's really activated the people in town. And I don't know if you've spent any time navigating the town and township-related Facebook pages, there has been a considerable amount of negative pushback to the latest dealings. So we are very encouraged that there's, you know, there's a sea change in how things will be happening. And with the Michigan Supreme Court decision on the Committee for Marshall, not the mega sites lawsuit, that got pushed back to the Court of Appeals, we're expecting that because of the guidance given by the Michigan Supreme Court, referring to that Clam Lake Township versus Department of Licensing and Regulatory Affairs, that the fatal defect in the whole mega site legitimization process goes all the way back to the failure of the city council to have followed the Joint Planning Commission's recommendation. And that, going back to that episode, that was really a crucial vote, and we were really encouraged to get that 4-2 vote. But somehow, the city council just did not get it and did not understand their contractual obligations, according to the PA 425 contracts, that the recommendation of the Joint Planning Commission be the controlling decision. And what may come out of this from the Court of Appeals is that it just may stand that the Joint Planning Commission will have superintending control on all decisions, as it says in the 425 contracts, will have controlling decision-making over all land use issues in the transferred properties.
Mr. Adams, your time is up. I'm sorry, I don't have a little timer here to say that, but thank you for your comments.
I figured there's only--
Okay, I'll be back.
--any people here, so.
Yeah. Are there any other public comments? Okay. Hearing and seeing none, we're going to move on to one of the items that we added to the agenda. I want to welcome Brent Phalen from Calhoun County GIS, geographic information--
County Closet Services, it stands for systems, but County Closet Services.
Services, that's why I always that last S, right? And just for everybody here in the audience, and those that might, you know, hear about or listen to the meeting afterwards, I want to, on behalf of all of us, thank Brent for his countless hours, and I'm sure he's going to share a little bit of that time for us. But as many of you may know, we have been without a zoning map, and our zoning map review committee, I shouldn't say we have been without one, but keeping it updated. So our zoning map review committee, which includes Trustee Woods, Commissioner Riggs, and Commissioner Buller, have spent countless hours trying to grapple with information and going back through the record books. So once we did our work, we sent a beautiful spreadsheet to Brent, and he's been working on that. And with that, Brent, maybe you can share with all of us what you do, how the map is updated, and what you've been doing for us. So thank you for being here.
So I do mapping for the county, really, and the county, so that's all of you, whenever anybody needs something done. I think the first master plan that I worked on, and I couldn't even tell you the year, but Tom Frank, when he was the supervisor of Albion Township.
Yes.
Approached us to do a zoning map. And so we did that. That's probably 2011 was the first time.
2019, maybe?
Someone, what's the word I'm looking for? An advisor for Marengo approached me. He was, he does plans, but he doesn't do GIS, so could the county do? And yes, of course. So that was what started my zoning. I can't remember when your former zoning official approached me to take what was Prime and Newhoff zoning map and update it to current. So I think I worked on that, I think that was 2018. And that was where the two on the right come from, I believe. And then we had some of the issues with the maps, so he approached me again and said, hey, can we work on this? I got the spreadsheet, and I think it was on December 19th. I came in and talked about some of the questions I had, and we got some of that stuff figured out. So what we've got on the map, or on the wall now, is the latest. I was working on it a little bit today. One of the things that we wanted to do was, for the 425 areas, we wanted to identify, because we had them all purple on the map, as you see in the one on the right. We had them all dark purple, just blanket 425s. But what we wanted to do was identify, in those 425 agreements, which go back to the township, and which stay with the city when those agreements are done.
Brent, do you want to show us on the map? I think Trustee Wright has a microphone for you there that we can capture that, sorry.
Sure. So previous to the work, as we were seeing, as we see in this map, they were the dark purple. And on this one, those areas, we've changed to blue if they transfer to the city, and lighter purple if they return to the township. Another thing I did, which wasn't obvious over here, was we have gotten GIS from the state of Michigan, what they are calling the official city boundaries and municipal boundaries. So I've made them dark on here, so that we can see those areas that they are calling at the state, the city of Marshall. There are a few, these dark purples still remain, that I'm not sure what we want to do with. So either I haven't found them in the agreements, so I'm not sure where they go in the agreements. The case with that would be what I think is a retention pond behind the Kmart Plaza. When Paul had me do this, that was a PA 425 identified parcel. It's still your parcel. It still has your number. Everything else around it has city tax numbers. Another one was Backwoods. I know there's a piece of Backwoods that transferred, but I don't see its description in a 425 agreement. Another question I have is, area north of town, the only area north of town in the State Farm property, in that agreement, is this 200 by 100 parcel. I don't see the rest of it described, so we're looking for that still.
Brent, just, I'm totally going to interrupt you, and I know there's going to be questions, but for the sake of the audience and for all of us here, when you've been using the 425 agreements, the individual, as well as there's the master plan 425 agreement, and in those, to clarify what you just mentioned, some of them have a legal description, of which you're utilizing to help establish--
Correct.
--that area. And so that's been wonderful, because I'm not the best person to read a legal description. And so that's how you've been able to capture that, you're looking at that legal description, and how does that transfer to the map?
Correct. Because I think I explained, I don't think I've ever explained in a public meeting, so I'll do that now. For tax purposes, when something is 425'd in, the taxes move to the primary unit, in this case, the city, right? So from a GIS perspective, we move, I moved that, I removed the Marshall parcel and put the Marshall city parcel in. So part of the problem with creating this map was, okay, what did it look like before it moved? And that's kind of what we're having with the questions that I have, that's kind of where we're at with that, is I know what the city of Marshall parcel looks like, but there are three properties here in your BSNA database that are in this area, there is an error in two of their descriptions, so I can't reclaim them. Does that make sense?
It does.
Okay. That's specifically here. A couple of the other questions that I had, that I got today, was there's the McClellan piece on West Drive. That area is not completely described in that agreement. There is a T piece in here that's not part of that description. I'm sure there's somewhere down the line that it is transferred, but I don't see it. I don't see where it's at. And then that's the same thing with this, this Backwoods piece used to all be, I can recall this Backwoods piece being cut up. So at some point, part of it came, and at some point, the other part came, but I don't, I can't see that document where the other part came across. I'm not sure. What else?
Some of the split zoning parcels? We have, I know we have the one on 15 Mile.
Oh, yes, there is one. We have this whole area identified as industrial, but you found somewhere back where it's supposed to be split zones, so that was a change that's made. It's all right, that's a whole nother thing we requested on this. In some of the other townships that I do this for, on their official zoning map, because the map changes, so you know what your official map is, we've got the certification that, hey, this is the map we passed in 2021, and then I've got a text box down here with revisions. So anytime we're taking and making a change, you've got a, hey, this parcel was changed from highway service commercial to agricultural, or whatever, however we're doing it, you could have a running list in between your official zoning maps. So you know what you're looking at, and you know what's changed from the original.
One other thing, Brent, that you were very good, as we've been going through this process, that you mentioned, was the urban boundary of the Michigan Avenue piece. Do you want to make mention that, where that is on the map, that's in our--
Yeah, yeah, that is right. I did mention that during the meeting on the 19th. You've got a, what do they, what did we call it? An additional setback corridor, that I'm not sure when it came into effect. But when it did come into effect, it is described as certain distance either side of the center line of Michigan Avenue. Well, that was great, when Michigan Avenue was what Michigan Avenue was, but what I was, my question on the 19th to Joanna and to Dwayne was, what happens to that now that Michigan's changed? It's another thing in this map, that's not in this one. We've been, because we're involved with 911, with dispatch, now I've got the roads. We've changed Michigan Avenue, looks like it should, the diverging diamonds are in here, so that is all up to date. But that is a question that I'm not sure how to answer, is I've got the additional setback quarter, the way that it stood, the way that it was following Michigan, the way that it was. But that's another, like I said, that's another open question for me, is should it change? How does it change?
Commissioners, that's obviously on our discussion for the master plan, but I wanted to point that out.
Yep.
That that is retained on the map, because that's what we have in there. There's been no official adjustment related to that, right?
Yep. And then you wanted me to talk a little bit about updates and how updates happen.
Yes.
I don't track updates, because I don't know when they're official. So if we want, and I'm sure we will, but when we want me to update this, it'll be communication back and forth. Hey, when you have it, when you have made a change official, contact, this is, you're not going to have the type of work that I've put into this over the last two to three months. It's easy from here on out. Once we get this to where we know this is what it is, and this is what it should be, the rest of it is going in and changing, think of it as changing a column in a spreadsheet, because these, it's, the parcels are your rows in a spreadsheet, and zoning is a column. All I got to do is change one from AG to HS, and it's changed. And then it's printing a map, so.
Brent, for all of us here, can you just very briefly describe, one of the things that came up, too, is maybe the parcels, like throughout a whole year, parcels might split, they might change in some manner. How do you, or what does that look like from your viewpoint? Like, when do you update that map related to parcels, or how does that all work?
So when you look at the county GIS, that thing gets changed. Now I make updates to it. If I find Joanna comes to me and says, hey, this thing changed, or I will even use Dan, your assessor, as an example, Dan will send me an email and say, hey, there was a lotline adjustment on there, on this thing, back in 2005, and it ain't on here. When I make changes, how I make changes to the parcel layer for county GIS is, your assessors, township assessors, send equalization, they have to, a database of their assessed properties every March. Equalization does what they do to that thing, that database, they homogenize it, so it's much easier now than it used to be. It used to be, you had 20 assessors doing things 20 different ways. Now the state has gotten to where those databases are pretty much homogenized, but the equalization director does a homogenization process, so it's one countywide database. I take that database, and what I do is go through and look at what parcel is in that database, parcel number is in that database, and what's in my map. This one's here, where it come from, what is it? That's generally how I'll catch splits and combinations. Lotline adjustments are tough, because the parcel, for some assessors, not for all, some will change, if there's a change to a parcel, they'll change the number, and some don't. I'm just aligning, I'm just adjusting the line between these two parcels, the numbers don't need to change. I won't see that. I'm looking for number changes, I'm not looking for anything else. So that's sometimes how things are missed. But from a, if you're looking at the county GIS, I wouldn't call the county GIS, I wouldn't make legal decisions on what you're seeing in the county GIS, because I'm not up to date. I'm only as up to date as what I got from the assessor last March. Now I have some, like I said, Dan sometimes will tell me, hey, this happened, so I'll make that change. But from the GIS standpoint, it's only once a year, it's March, and I probably don't have it in there until April or May. The other thing I know, I'll point out while we're here, and while we have an audience, another thing that questions have come up, you might know of a parcel that existed, and you'll put that parcel number in to the GIS, and the map won't come out, it'll say not mappable, but you'll get the bump out that gives you all the information, it's because it's in the assessor's database. And we've had a couple of those, where you've got, prime examples will be any of this stuff over here with the churches on 17 Mile Brewer, whatever, Kalamazoo, whatever we're calling it.
Yeah.
Yep. You still have them active, not active, they are still in your database, but they are inactive, because he's not taxing them anymore. So it's still in the database, but there's not a parcel for it, because, well, in this instance, it's because there's a city parcel for it. So that's generally what happens. We had a couple of those questions, hey, it's in here, it's coming up, but I'm not seeing it, it's not active. Anything else?
One of the other things that we did is in the legend there, that legend now matches our zoning ordinance and descriptions. With the addition, though, however, that Brent already mentioned on the onset, which was, we have color-coded the ones, the 425 agreement areas, the ones that we know and have record of. of, to who they revert back to after the passage of time per each agreement. Thank you, Brent.
You're welcome.
I would like to take this opportunity to open up to any commissioners who have questions for Brent. Anyone?
Or, what's our status on answering the questions that he has?
Well, I...
Since I've been out of it the last two or three years.
Sure, it's okay. There were a lot of emails flying, and a few of them I misunderstood as well, like you just mentioned with the parcels that are inactive. So really, there's probably not much more we need to do with those, is that right, Brent?
Yeah, I think so. I'm going to turn this off.
Yes, go ahead, yeah.
Because I've got, I do have, I wrote some notes in this version. So there are a couple of things that I wanted to mention, of course, my computer went to sleep. There are a couple of things that you're going to know better than I do, and that is like the McClellan, the McClellan description that I'm seeing in the agreement versus what we're seeing on the ground, what's being taxed by the city, and what the description looked like in the agreement. I don't know if there's another agreement after that, like an amendment to the agreement that amended the description. Another top of my head was the Kmart Plaza. So the original 90 agreement for the Kmart Plaza describes everything but Family Fair and the gas station, but there is a, there's, so the agreement itself, it looks like the agreement itself, but then there's a page in the back that says parcel B, after the entire agreement is done, there's a page in the back that says parcel B, that describes Family Fair. So in the agreement, the agreement says, the original, the 1990 agreement says it reverts to, or it stays with the township. But there is a later agreement that says Farmer Jack, I think it says, I think it's Farmer Jack.
Somebody wrote on there, I think Farmer Jack, yeah.
So it's on your website, is the Farmer Jack agreement, that describes Family Fair, except for the gas station, and that transfers to the city. I've got it with the 1999 agreement, but those are some of the questions, and like I said, I've got some questions in the spreadsheet, so I'll send you the spreadsheet. But I think at this point, they're kind of minor, and I think I'm in the same boat as you. If I'm not seeing the agreement, the only one I'm going to know to go to the agreement for is you guys. One of the things I did this morning was, I'm pretty okay in the county's register of deeds, but I can't find any 91, 92, 93 agreements, just looking up agreement, city of Marshall, or Marshall Township. So there are some agreements that I'm not finding that I wouldn't, you know what I mean? I'd be reliant on you to know what the agreements were.
Brent, just for this exact point, because I think for the majority of the map, it's intact, and we've made the corrections through the ZBA that needed to be made. It's those 425 properties and those legal descriptions that are probably the biggest thing right now we're trying to get on the map. I did have file a Freedom of Information Act with the Office of the Great Seal, I paid my $129.15, and they're supposed to be sending us electronically all of the records they have on file, because I believe that's what they use as well for the boundary changes, if I'm not mistaken. So maybe that will give us some additional insight and record for the township as well. Again, we have what's on our website. So that might be, you know, some additional resource. I appreciate you looking at the register of deeds as well, that's a great, you know, that you were able to do that as well, we appreciate that, for sure.
I understand that when we have a question about the 425 agreements, we go through our clerk, Jeff, and he goes to the county to request what they have, because that's just where he goes. Because everything has to be registered at that point before it heads to the state, so that's where he gets the info when we request it. If we don't have complete agreements or any questions, he goes straight to the county for us.
And just from one commissioner's standpoint, and certainly other commissioners, please weigh in, is, you know, at some standpoint, we may need to go with what we have. I mean, I don't know what that looks like, that's certainly, that whole issue with those, maybe some of the questions that you have, maybe beyond this, you know, this group. But we might just have to make those maybe another category, that, I don't know what the, you know, Planning Commission would like to do related to that, but, you know, we can only go with what information we have. So once we see your spreadsheet, it might be something that the township board has to look through, I mean, I don't know, but we certainly aren't the keepers of the, you know, 425 agreements. But if that helps, you know, from a state level, maybe that'll give us some insight, I don't know.
Well, given the questions that Brent still has, is it really going to affect the boundaries for our legend here for the different properties? How close is this map to the...
Well, I think it's pretty close. Like I said, the only real questions that I have at this point are those, how do, and they're all 425 related, how do we want them represented on the map? Other than that, the rest of your zoning is as you've given it to me.
So it's just clarification on properties that have already been 425ed?
Right. And that, and it leads directly back to the, how we're classifying them in the map as the, because, like I've said before, this is the first I've ever, I've ever experienced, there's a possibility of a 425 property reverting to the township. So I never had to do that before. So coming up with the, how are we doing it, and those are really the questions we have right now, is on how are we classifying these pieces?
Okay. It doesn't change that they're 425, it's just what happens, right? Because I know from the work of the zoning map review committee, and I know the meetings that we've had with Brent, is we're headed into, you know, our master plan, and we really wanted to show, you know, what does the city proper boundary now look like in the township? And, you know, we saw little inklings of that in the 2023 map, I think that's a March of 2023 map, I could be wrong, but this really helps to bring that out. Other questions and comments from the Planning Commission?
The split zoning, is that like one parcel, two zoning, or was it split?
Yes, it's one parcel, two zoning.
Okay, okay, thank you.
Like the front 490 feet of it are industrial, and the rest of it is agricultural, I think.
Okay, all right, thank you.
We had one other parcel maybe that was split zoning, but I can't remember, and I don't, we don't need to, yeah, I think, I thought there was one other parcel, but maybe not. What was it?
G-Drive.
G-Drive. We can talk about that offline, but Brent, I mean, how many hours have you spent on this, honestly? I mean, it's been...
A bunch.
It's been a bunch, right? I mean, and the reason I ask that, not to quantify it, but to just really appreciate, you know, with our zoning map review committee and all of us here, it wasn't a simple flick of the switch correction.
No, and like, I would point that back to the fact that it's the way that, a lot of it is the way that I have, for the 15 years at the county, treated 425 parcels, is the fact that they're not in the township anymore. I had, you have educated me in this process too, I had no clue that they were still township considered parcels, because this is the only time I've experienced it. Anything in Emmett, it's the city now. That's just the way it's been for my 15 years. So reading some of these agreements have been very, very interesting, of, wow, I didn't even know that's what they were, I didn't know that's how they were, what they were for, right?
Depending where you're at.
Right, yeah, yeah, because my, like I said, my understanding of 425s were, they were to stop annexation and to get the township's tax money from properties that otherwise would have just been taken, and you get nothing from them. So reading these agreements, I was, okay, this is an education on what a 425 is really, really for. It's for planning for both, the benefit of both units, so...
Very good. So just since we're on this topic, I think one of the items that I would really like to see happen potentially, and no, you know, not trying to put this on Brent, but I'm hoping at our February meeting, we can approve a zoning map to go to the township board for ultimately the clerk's signature. I mean, I...
That's my next question.
Yeah, I would really, I mean, between now and, I mean, I think, you know, I should, we should be getting more information and/or decide how we want to show these on the map. If we don't have conclusion, commissioners, and this might, you know, if we don't have conclusion on, say, the Kmart Plaza, Backroads and McClellan, I think, not seeing your spreadsheet, you know, how do we want to resolve that? Maybe that will be a topic at our February meeting, but I really hope that we can come out of that with an approved zoning map that we can send to the township board. Does that seem feasible? I mean, obviously, you're waiting on us, Brent, so...
Oh, yeah, the hard part's done. Like I said, it's, the only other, the only other time-consuming part I would have, and it shouldn't be that horrible, given descriptions, is the State Farm property north of town. How do we want, because that left in three pieces, and it's two pieces. And the only thing preventing me from having it in the three pieces is there are errors in the assessment, the description that's in the assessment database. So I was hoping an agreement gave me what came over, and it didn't, it only gave me the little piece.
So more to come on that one. Obviously...
I'm going to put a big question mark on that one, that's fine.
Yeah, we'll just put that as a question mark on the map right now.
Exactly.
So for the sake of, let's say, the zoning map, that hopefully in February, you know, up to these, up to the commissioners here, but that potentially we are maybe at a point for approval, it might change in the future as we get through our master plan. But Brent, if I'm not mistaken, I think you might be able to help us, I hope, with a future land use map, because I think you helped us with that, and I think we had talked about that too. Obviously, none of us here are mapping professionals as Brent is, and I think the county would be able to assist us in refining even our future land use map as we get through the master plan process.
If you don't have a consultant doing it, consultant is the word I was looking for earlier, if you don't have a consultant doing it, yeah, I can absolutely help.
Because you did that one, correct?
Yep.
Okay. All right. Commissioners, anything else?
Thank you.
Brent, thank you so much. Thank you very, very much.
I'm here for it.
Okay. Moving on to communication on the agenda, just wanted our fellow commissioners and the audience to know that on December 15th, the township board did reappoint Secretary Markounis and myself. Our terms will now be ending December 31st of 2028. That has been updated on the Township Planning Commission website as well, so that's been updated. With that, we're moving on to the approval of the minutes. We have three sets of minutes. It is the December 2nd, 2025 meeting minutes. We happen to have a quorum at the December 8th Convis Township Planning Commission meeting, which was interesting, by the way, just to make mention, see how another planning commission conducts a public hearing. And then we had a quorum at the December 9th Joint Planning Commission meeting. With that, is there a motion to approve the minutes?
So moved.
Second.
We have a motion by Commissioner Riggs, seconded by Commissioner Woods. Any questions or comments on the minutes? Hearing and seeing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, same sign. Motion carries, the minutes are approved. We're moving on to one of the other amended agenda items, we'll label it, I believe, new business. We had publicized our planning commission meetings to include January 20th as a master plan review meeting, and I apologize, did not catch the fact that that is a conflict with the township board meetings, because they normally meet on a Monday, and that happens to be the 19th, is a holiday. So commissioners, just a question on, do we want to change that date? It has been publicized, but it was a special meeting, it's not one of our regular meetings. Do we, what would we like to do with that? My apologies for the confusion.
I would suggest we move the date.
I think moving it back one day, if everybody's schedule to the 21st, everybody's schedule allows that.
I'll be gone that week, but I could try joining via Zoom, or I'll be here the week prior or the week after.
Would you like to move it to another week? Earlier or later?
So going into the last week of January then?
Twenty seventh, what do you mean?
The only thing that worries me about that is we have our February 4th master plan open house, and if we're going to...
That's pretty quick.
Yeah, if there's anything that we want to showcase at the master plan open house, and we haven't had our second meeting, I don't know that we'll have enough time to prepare.
Let's see the dates.
I'm available the whole month, so whatever works for everybody else, works for me. What does your schedule look like?
What about if we moved it, advanced it a week? Is that really bad? That only gives us, that's next week, I guess, isn't it?
Let's see. Is that going to give us enough time?
Time between?
Between tomorrow and next week, too.
Is there anyone else that would potentially be absent? I mean, are we going to risk a quorum if we did have it? Not that we don't want Secretary Markounis here, but if we did have it the 21st at 7:00 in lieu of the 20th?
I think it would just be Commissioners Buller and Markounis at work.
I could try joining via Zoom.
Really? That'd be great.
Yeah.
Because that's just, yeah, we wouldn't have any...
I couldn't do it, but I could probably get someone else to do it that day. If you did it on the Thursday, I could definitely do it, but on the 22nd.
22nd, you're talking, right?
The 22nd, yeah. But that's, I'm not a commissioner, and I, yeah, just, I'm over here at this department.
But a very important part of our...
We appreciate that.
So commissioners, what I'm hearing, I know we don't have a motion on the floor yet, but just to summarize, I'm hearing potentially 7:00 on the 21st or 7:00 on the 22nd. If anybody wants to, I'm available both days.
I'm available both days.
Doesn't matter to me.
22nd, keeps you from having to double up off the Lansing trip.
That's okay.
So, let's go 22nd.
Commissioner Summers, does that work for you?
Don't know, but I'll make it.
Sounds perfect to me. Is there a motion for that, by the way?
Move to change the meeting for the master plan workshop to the 22nd of January.
I'll second it.
At 7:00 PM.
All right, we have a motion by Commissioner Sly, seconded by Commissioner Summers, for our special meeting related to the master plan review, to be January 22nd at 7:00. I will make sure our clerk knows that, and we get it posted and put out on mass notification, and it can be here, yes, thank you. It will be here in lieu of at the fire station, so I better make note of that. So I'll try to get, I mean, we can all work on getting that word out, that would be great, because I know we had publicized it as the 20th, so my apologies there. All right, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, same sign. Motion carries. All right, moving on to unfinished business, I'm sorry, I forgot which letter that is on the agenda, but it was previously J. We have one item that I know this commission has talked about for some time. I see our zoning administrator, thank you, is in the audience as well. Shelley, welcome and Happy New Year. We have the Mr. David Brown Special Land Use Suspension of Parcel 16-272-015-00. We did receive an email from Commissioner Brown dated, excuse me, Shelley, our zoning administrator did, dated December 18th of 2025. It is in the packet for you all, but again, we did make a motion... But again, we did make a motion to proceed with citation and suspension. So to my understanding, that citation is in progress. I haven't heard anything differently there, but we wanted to give the commissioners an update. Questions or comments on that item? Okay. Then we have item B, which is the Next Era Serial City Solar. We have our zoning administrators' report attached as well. And the highlighted area in red is the latest update for this. And I know that there was a question at the last meeting related to what the difference was between Next Era and Serial City. I'm not so sure that I still know what the difference is, but Shelley, do you? I'm sorry, to the podium, please.
Serial City is basically the, what they're calling the project. Next Era is the project managing company that is in charge of everything there at the solar facility.
Thank you. Well, since you're at the podium. Yeah, thank you. Appreciate this report. A lot of the, the latest update, just for everybody here to know, I'm going to try to paraphrase it, and then please, Shelley, you can take over from there. But most of it is centered, the update is centered around these trees that were not planted because one and/or two property owners, two or three property owners, two, excuse me, did not want to have those trees. So really, we have been going back and forth with Next Era, trying to figure out what we can do to ensure that the right amount, the amount of trees that were approved by this planning commission in the site plan are still part of the project. Is that it, and then that shall join?
Yes.
That's where we're at with that. Questions, want anything to add, anything new and exciting on this at all since the last we talked?
I have not received any type of replies back from Next Era. I had been working with Joe. He, they have determined that because they planted all of the trees where they were supposed to, and Marshall Township agreed to not have the trees planted on the two particular parcels. The agreement with Paul was that those parcels would be planted elsewhere, and Paul approved that based on a minor change of the Marshall Township zoning ordinance. When going through and reviewing that, I had a little bit different interpretation on this. I really felt that this should go through the planning commission to be reviewed and approved. Next Era really believes that they have nothing further that they need to do with the planting of 700-plus trees that did not get planted around the solar facility at some place. At one point in time, we talked about the possibility of offering some trees maybe as a good faith gesture to the township so that they could plant them where they wanted. We did inquire from Mr. Banfield, because he was a landscape architect, if we could plant the 700 trees throughout the solar facility. And he basically said that all of this is laid out specifically based on the size of the tree, the type of the tree, the location of the tree, how large the tree is going to grow. And if we start incorporating additional landscaping into that, then the trees that we have there are not necessarily going to mature the way that they're supposed to. Mr. Banfield had no other suggestions as far as location to plant any of these trees. I did notify Next Era that they are not in compliance with the site plan, because the agreement was that those trees would be planted elsewhere, and I have now referred them back to the planning commission.
Thank you, Shelley. Questions or comments from the commissioners? All right, Shelley, thank you for your.
I guess, should we try to reach out to the people who live close to the solar field? I guess maybe I, I feel that we should try to make contact with the people that live within visibility of those and see what they would, you know, if they would like some of those trees. And where are the trees stored? I mean, what?
They're not. What happened, what happened was this all transpired right around the time that Paul Anderson left the township as a zoning administrator. Because Mr. Anderson wasn't here, and because Mr. Banfield was no longer employed as the landscape architect for the township, Next Era did nothing with the trees, and they died.
And some of them were staged. If you might recall there, I can't remember, I think, I don't know what address it is. Some of them had been staged there, waiting to be planted. And I think Commissioner Sly, you have to double check me on this, but we saw that they were getting removed, and which caught our attention, which is why weren't they being planted around the perimeter at that time?
Somebody just took them.
I think, I think Next Era, and some of them died, and that's.
Yeah, they didn't know what to do with them. I don't know if they attempted to get a hold of somebody else here at the township or not. My take was, it doesn't matter whether there was a zoning administrator or not, you still have an obligation to fulfill through the township. And you should have gotten a hold of somebody to figure out a plan on how you were going to proceed. So the fact that nothing was done as opposed to attempting something does not in any way relieve them from the fact that right now they are in violation of that site plan.
And commissioners, if I'm not mistaken, Commissioner Sly and Commissioner Woods and others might have to correct me, but I thought we had an escrow account with Next Era as well. So that'll be something that we have to maybe look into, because if I'm not mistaken, we have to look at the fee schedule. But this time and these efforts that we're spending on this could potentially also be charged to that escrow. And I don't know where we stand with that, but Shelley has spent considerable time on this. And Commissioner Summers, I think we are, I don't think we're giving up yet based on Shelley's good work and looking at our zoning ordinance and such that we, you know, as being a good neighbor, right? And that's what we heard throughout the time that Next Era and the solar was developing, that we're going to be good neighbors, and I'm hoping that that still is the case.
Me also. Like I said, Joe has involved his supervisors now. It's been probably two or three days since I received an email. I have not received any replies. I'm not going to just jump out and call him to see what's going on. I will give them time to kind of deliberate on what they want to do.
Right.
What we had originally talked about was, I suggested that maybe they offer some of these trees to the township. And it sounded like that was something that they were going to be willing to do. Why the change of heart? I really haven't been able to figure it out. The only thing that I got back from Joe was, well, Mr. Banfield said that we have fulfilled our obligation for planting the trees everywhere except in those particular parcels where they're not to be planted. Therefore, because Paul Anderson wasn't there, and we had no direction from the township, it's basically not our fault, and we consider this complete. And I said, no, in no way, shape, or form are we done with this yet, so.
Thank you for standing up for us.
You're welcome.
Thank you, Commissioner Summers. I'll add to that when Shelley also mentions, you know, for the township, we had also discussed, how do we get those trees to maybe the residents that might want them, you know, that were part of that?
Right.
Like you mentioned, right? So maybe there are some that would want some additional trees. I mean, I have no idea.
Right, and I do know that in working with the city of Marshall, they actually have a plan to go and plant trees throughout the city in various locations. That's something the township might want to consider also. Are there other areas that could use some additional landscaping, some kind of screening or buffering? 700 trees is a lot of trees to be able to plant and really improve what the landscape looks like around the township right now.
Thank you, Shelley. Commissioners, I'm sorry, anything else? Thank you. All right, moving on to the master plan amendment update. Was not intending, unless commissioners want to, to spend a lot of time on this. Tomorrow evening, same place, same time at 7:00 PM, the planning commission will be reviewing the master plan amendment and just going through the master plan, the zoning map, those types of things. Again, as an update. We also are going to be reviewing the survey results. In a nutshell, there were 236 surveys returned, and, which is about a 16.6% return rate. You can find that information in the packet for tomorrow evening as well. So commissioners, any question on this item on the agenda? No? Okay. Moving on to the Joint Planning Commission update. I want to thank Shelley for her reviews. We do have a public hearing set for 15855 West Michigan Avenue. This is a special land use public hearing. Again, that'll be at the January 13th Joint Planning Commission meeting. Also, there is, at the last planning commission meeting, was that December, December? We did approve the Millbrook housing development. And I am happy to report that they will be here in this, at our meeting on February 3rd to update the township on what this development looks like. And this is that parcel, those properties off of Hughes or A Drive. So we're glad that Millbrook was very supportive, I think, during that meeting, the Joint Planning Commission meeting, to come to this meeting. So if anybody's interested in that development and weren't able to capture it either in person or online with the Joint Planning Commission meeting, they'll be here on February 3rd, so we'll be adding that to our agenda. And then at the November meeting, we did elect a chair and a vice chair. Is that the November meeting or December meeting? Huh, sorry, you guys, but I should say that I was elected chair and be working with Tim Fitzpatrick at, for the city as the vice chair, so honored to serve in that capacity. And then we did approve a 2026 meeting schedule. If you look at our agenda online, it is linked, but you can find the Joint Planning Commission meeting dates on our website under the Joint Planning Commission meeting, so. Any questions or comments on the Joint Planning Commission meeting? Commissioners Riggs or Woods, anything you want to add?
I appreciate that it took some time to straighten things out. But as I had mentioned to them in the previous meeting prior to that, once we did get it straightened out, everything would click and progress as it should. And it did.
Correct, we got to the.
It did. It just took a while for both sides to agree to how it turned out. But I'm happy that it did. And it turned out the right way, so.
Thank you. All right, I just wanted to give an update, this item, previously item L on our, on our agenda, the Zoning Board of Appeals. Just wanted to let everybody know that the Zoning Board of Appeals did meet on December 4th. And we did deny a variance for 12360 L Drive North, 16-060009-00. So that variance was denied. We do have two additional applications. I don't know that a new zoning board of appeals meeting has been set yet, but we have two variances. One is at 124 Squaw Creek and 13235 J Drive North. So just wanted to make sure that this board was kept up to date, or this commission was kept up to date with this. I think anytime we get, if we're getting a lot of the same variances, those are areas that maybe we want to look at from a zoning ordinance perspective. I don't know that we're there yet, I'm still learning, but I just wanted to share with you these particular ones. If anybody has any questions, I'm sure Shelley can answer them as well. But those will at some point be going before the Zoning Board of Appeals.
Doesn't, doesn't seem like we're getting anything the same. There are some unique ones that have been processed so far, and.
Any other questions on that? Thank you. All right. Moving on to, I always want to have this on the agenda. Maybe I can put it just as a note, not necessarily, or we, as an agenda item, but I want to make mention that everybody knows that the township now has a mass notification system. Please, if you are interested in getting updates to your inbox in your email, you can sign up to receive them. You can certainly sign out at any time that you want. But it's a good way for weekly, sometimes twice a week, you can get updates of what's happening at the township. You can see when the meetings are, or any updates that come up. Oh, thank you. Trustee Wright has that, it's right there on our homepage. Very easy to sign up. And I really appreciate the township board having this available for folks that are interested in knowing what's going on at the township.
How many?
How many? Oh, I don't know, I didn't look. Do you know, Wayne, I mean? Yeah, I apologize, but we can, I will follow up with that.
And is there other ways that we can advertise it?
I, I think there are.
Open for ideas on that one, so.
Well, hopefully the QR code's out there, and we have those stack of papers out there, but we created a QR code, too. I don't know if there's flyers out on the table there, but you could always take a picture of a QR code as well and be able to sign up. I mean, I think we should be handing those out left and right. So if you, audience that are here, if they're not on the table, we can get some, but please sign up. It's just a good way to know what's happening in your community, so. And commissioners, if you haven't signed up, please make sure that you do as well. All right, moving on to the second point on our agenda for public comments. This does not need to be just agenda items. We welcome you to the podium, and you'll have five minutes of time. Anybody is welcome. Please feel free. Mr. Adams?
I'm back. Again, Barry Wayne, 622 S Green Street. Seeing what's been happening, especially in the past month, with the LDFA meeting in which a purchase agreement was made peremptorily without significant public input. It seems like the city is making the same mistakes that they made with the mega site. And the prospects of what could happen with the implementation of this data center project, it, it has really brought to question amongst the city voters what's really going on with the, the agenda of the city. And we're seeing that the only concerns, the only parameter, salient parameter that the city seems to be operating on is whatever opportunistic or exploitive availability might, that might come up that would enhance the tax revenue base of the city, they're fine with it. And they seem to be doing their best at trying to gloss over the seriousness of the potential impacts that putting a data center just on the south side of town there between the industrial park area and Stewart Lake would have on the county. And they don't seem to have any problem with the fact that in order to do it, they would be destroying 110 acres of pristine wetland, but it's only 110 acres out of 240 acres. So, you know, no big deal. And maybe it's time that the decision makers in these projects should widen the expanse of their decision-making and take into consideration what is actually being destroyed in the process while they're trying to create these, what will end up in the long run being transient sources of tax revenue. Now, we already see what's happened with the mega site. You know, the Madas, you know, the pro-meg people are, you know, happy as jaybirds, thinking that, you know, the factory got built or whatever. But for some people, what's happened is nothing more than they created. is nothing more than the creation of a denatured, mile-long scab upon the land. And what used to be a source of food production, viable food production and wildlife habitat, has now essentially become sterile. It's just something that looks like a picture. And we need to expand our understanding of land use, our worldview of how land should be used. And we should realize that when it comes to the notion that there might be another quick financial windfall, that shouldn't fall prey to the fact that we have our specie, our responsibility as a species, for stewardship of the land. And with this thing last night about the new water treatment ordinance that seems only for one purpose, was to relax the restrictions on potential pollutants, and actually glossing over and ignoring the monitoring of particular pollutants of concern that would, that would really have a serious impact on the community.
Thank you.
Okay. I heard it.
Are there any further comments?
I just wanted to really thank all of this commission. It's been an amazing year in my mind, and you guys have been very professional, you've been very thorough, you've done a tremendous amount of work, I know, digging out all of the 425 agreements and putting them on that map and correcting errors that were there from the past. So I really appreciate that, and I really appreciate the subgroup that went to the JPC meetings. I know it was tough, but you hung in there and you held your ground in a very professional manner, and I really appreciate that, and I'm looking forward to a great new year and a look at the master plan. Thank you.
Thank you. Please.
David Beg, 504 West Green Street in Marshall. I'm just gonna piggyback onto Glenn's comments. I so appreciate the work that you guys are doing, and some of the meetings that you've been involved with, I was able to watch online, and it's like, holy cow, I can take pride in being an area resident again, and people are standing up and saying, this isn't right, and we need to do it right. That people are counting on us for that. And that took some courage, that, one meeting in Marshall I was at, and Mick, you are the only person I could personally change a thing, because I'm, I didn't mean to do that, left too quickly for me to be able to thank you personally, but I thank you now, and Steve, I've known you for a long time, and really nice to meet. Wayne, thank you. Thank you all. I've been encouraged by being, watching you guys in the meetings online and being here in person, and I am seeing a lot of professionalism, I'm seeing people who genuinely care about their community, so thank you very much.
Any other comments? Okay. Hearing and seeing none, we'll move on to Commissioner comments, and I'll start to my right, Commissioner Summers.
Other than an update, I had a conversation with Greg, and I can't really pronounce his last name, Federelli or something, with DOT, to get me an update on Michigan Avenue activity, and he assured me that from the mega site narrow down to the top of the hill at 12 Mile, nothing's gonna happen, so nothing, nothing more with the DOT will happen in Marshall Township as far as the road until 2027. Be concentrating on the intersection. So even though, and I want to get a good look at that map up there now, because it looks as though Mada owns a lot of property, that they still are gonna be taxed by Marshall Township, which is, I think, something we need to keep track of, because there's a lot of, there's a lot of white area there along Michigan Avenue on the south side that he is designated that are not in a 425. But yet, Mada came in and eradicated all the property and took all the houses and buildings and everything down. I don't know, I guess I should attend all the JPC meetings and question Mada if they happen to show up at a meeting, question them what their intentions are in my view of where I live.
Well, maybe we can make an attempt for 2026 to see if we can get the Michigan Department of Transportation here to do a presentation and give us an update, or at the Township Board for that matter, probably be more suited. You know, maybe they can come and do a presentation. Or if you talk to him, you can ask him.
I did.
Oh.
Two or three months before. They haven't, they haven't, they're not working on the map for Michigan, for Marshall Township section of Michigan Avenue for another two, three months, because they're still finishing up the big intersection at 11 Mile. So understandable.
Okay. Commissioner Woods, are they still planning on doing 15 Mile Road Myrene Ridge Drive? Is that next year out here?
I believe so.
Repaving it?
I'm seeing an update on it. They're done, they're done for the winter.
Oh, for sure.
They finished up the interchange, most part. Saw today that all three lanes are open both directions, so I think they're pretty much done till spring.
Commissioner Woods, any comments or updates?
I have one. I know a bunch of us attended the Convis Township public hearing for their best system, and I noticed something there that we also saw at the JPC meeting with the Millbrook Housing developers. They have, both entities have engaged township residents in their projects, the concerns, you know, because township residents are bordering their activities that they got going on. They have engaged these residents unbeknownst to the Planning Commission and the Township Should we not have a policy or something like that, that if our residents are involved, these entities should come speaking to us, either at the Board and/or the Planning Commission, to let us know what's going on? Because our, we represent the residents, and it's great that they're talking with them. I think it's fantastic. But as the representative legislative and, you know, the holder of the rules and everything else, we need to be aware of what they're going through and what's happening on the fringes of our township. And in neither case, the best system out at Convis Township, we didn't know. They said that, came out and said, well, we don't need to talk to y'all, because you're not in our township, you're in Convis, but we have, but they have Penfield on one side and Marshall Township on the other, and the only people they're talking to is...
And Emmett. And Emmett.
And Emmett. The only ones they're talking to is Convis.
According to my sister, who is a person in the know, she ran into some opposition when she sent out notifications to those people, because according to her, when she read the laws, 300 feet from the property have to be notified, but she ran into some opposition.
It doesn't say 300 feet in your township.
Oh.
I mean, I don't have the law in front of me, but...
She, that's probably why she ran into opposition. But...
I don't have it in front of me, and I'm not trying, yeah, just...
But that's, I mean, that's proper. I mean, we just denied the, we denied the variance for Wyatt, and he's really close to, you know, that's what's really concerned, that, you know...
So for the sake of everybody in the audience, and maybe those that might be listening, not knowing what we're talking about, and you guys all correct me, because there are plenty of us that were at that meeting, there is a potential, the Planning Commission of Convis Township is reviewing a potential battery storage facility on L Drive North, is it between 12 and 13?
It's on 12.
Right on 12, excuse me, right on 12, I'm sorry.
12 and L, right.
Which is the border, you know, let's just, we're talking about Marshall Township at the moment, but is the border across the street, so to the south is Marshall Township, and to the north is Convis Township. So what's been happening and why we took interest in this is, number one, it's always interesting to go to another Township's Planning Commission meeting, but it was a public hearing, and it is affecting our residents. I do want everybody here to know that we did invite the Invenergy, Invenergy, I think is the company that's developing it, to be at this very meeting to do a presentation to our residents and how this would affect us, because we're, I frankly, have still have yet to completely understand in clarity, right, after being at that meeting, is it, you know, what's, I mean, obviously, they're near it, you know, there's all those things that come with it, but is there some runoff or anything else coming up into Marshall Township? And they denied and would not come to this meeting to do a presentation for us and our residents, which is really, really unfortunate, right? And I'll just say that. I think anytime I've been in public service my, majority of my career, and you should be willing to present your project to citizens, whether you know there might be opposition or no opposition, but anyways. So that's what we're talking about, and I think the real question is, I think what you're saying, Commissioner Woods, is when this happens, how are our residents and how is this body or the Township Board, how do we find out? And all of us, when we do a master plan, we have to send it out to our neighboring jurisdictions to let them know we're gonna be going through a master plan, right, for any feedback. We've got Calhoun County Planning that looks at a countywide master plan, because how do we, you know, if we have a commercial property next to a residential in neighboring townships, so there's that caveat, but how do we, Commissioner Woods, how do we compel our neighboring townships to ensure that they are, you know, seeing beyond their border, you know, and how things affect? I don't know the answer to that. I don't know that there, maybe there's some legislation that says they're supposed to, I don't know.
I think part of, part of the problems, I don't think problem issue is, it doesn't happen all that often.
True, that we know of.
You just don't think about it, for one thing, yeah. But I think professional courtesy from the companies that are doing these projects should dictate, we need to come before, because they've gone before the city, they've gone for that, for the Millbrook project, they went before Convis Board or Planning Commission for that side of it, so it just, you know, there should be some avenue that they should be approaching us and informing us of what's going on.
I agree. I'm just wondering, we'll continue down the line here, because otherwise I'll keep talking for the next half hour, but I haven't seen a lot of that, and just giving you, from my personal perspective, is, you know, between solar and between the mega site and now between this, I could go on and on, there have not been Michigan Department of Transportation, there have not, I haven't seen a Metta Township Board meeting.
Did Mada come to us on the mega site?
Nope.
I don't, I don't recall them.
Only on the night of the votes.
Yeah.
In rever, in reverting back to history.
Yeah, I don't know. You know, it was just a concern I had, maybe...
That's valid.
We can address during the year and maybe come up with some sort of zoning requirement, you know, as, as things are, these are all new things that's happened the last three, four years, and we've never encountered them before, but we are now, in all the other townships, municipalities, whatever their size, they're getting involved in these things, and I don't want to go use transparency, but just being aware of and notifying your surrounding partners, like the master plan gets sent out to everybody that you border, you know, if something's affecting those that border you, professional courtesy between municipalities dictates that you should be notifying them also.
And I hope all of us here, if we have things like that, we need to remind ourselves, too, to compel ourselves to make that same outreach, right? Because sometimes even I, and we forget, right, because we're so thinking about, you know, our township.
I think Shelley has to...
Oh, Shelley, yes, please, can you come to the podium?
I'm not real familiar with what the Michigan Zoning Enabling Act says, but based on the conversations that I'm hearing here, I think it might be a good idea that I kind of pull that up and start reviewing it. Maybe there is something already put in place that does give us some type of regulations or provisions on how we would handle governing townships that are butting up to each other and their parcels, and just being able to make sure that communications are done. I will say, I think the city of Marshall is going to become, it seems, a little more forthcoming with information, a little quicker involving the township a little bit more, just based on my conversations with them. So I kind of feel like that portion of it might be going away a little bit, but it never hurts to reach out to the rest of the townships that border Marshall Township and just talk to them. I mean, people are not unwilling to communicate and help out, I just think it's something that may not have been done before, so I would be more than happy to look into that for you if you'd like.
Appreciate it. And thank you for all your efforts with the city the last several months.
Not a problem. Commissioner Riggs?
No, I just was gonna say what I guess Glenn and Dave said, too, I think we had a really productive year last year. I think we were all tired, but we all did a good job, and just looking forward to another year of keep going.
Thank you. Secretary Markunis?
Hi, ditto. Tired, long year, but good year, a lot of learning for me, so still, still learning a lot.
Great job. Commissioner Sly?
Only thing I thought of was when Brenton was talking about the corridor along Michigan Avenue. Since Michigan Avenue has changed, wouldn't that require us to do a zoning ordinance change?
But it's all 425.
I, I, I'm, yeah, is it in our zoning ordinance specifically for that area, or is it on the future, or is it in the master plan? I gotta double check, it is in the zoning ordinance?
Yes.
Yeah.
And even if it's 425, anything this side of 69 follows our, our zoning takes precedence over the city.
So do we just add that to our to-do list?
Yes. I'm just asking.
All righty.
I was wondering about that.
Yeah, that's one of my questions, you know.
I would think we could remove it from the old Michigan Avenue, I don't know.
Well, that's gonna be a good topic of discussion, then. We'll add that to the 2026 to-do list, because obviously...
The list is this long.
I know. Brett can't change, we can't change the map if we don't have an official, you know, ordinance, and then it'll affect the master plan, future land use as well, so, thank you, Commissioner Sly, we will add that to the list.
More work?
Know why you were appointed vice chair again.
Yeah, I was just gonna say.
Hey, you guys kind of stepped up.
Hey, you guys could have stepped up.
I think that sounds like another committee, Commissioner Sly. All right. Anything else? All right, I just have a few items. I know it's getting late. My apologies, as always. Couple items, we will be posting the zoning administrative position, hopefully yet this week on our website, so we're getting, we're getting that out. I believe we are planning on taking applications until January 26, if I'm not mistaken, so just wanted to let everybody know that's moving along. One of the other things that Brett, I think, is going to do for us, sorry, Brett, you're still here, and is, once we get this map finalized, one of the great things that Brett was able to do for us, or to show us an example, is to actually then have section maps, which are, you can zoom in a little bit better, and our hope was that potentially on those zoning maps, we would be able to have some parcel IDs, if I'm not mistaken, as well, which is really gonna help us as a commission. Maybe that's something we can have on our website, too, but it just really helps us, you know, as we're sitting here talking about parcels, if we had them by section, we'd be able to zoom in on those a little bit better. So appreciate his assistance assistance on that, and I know that was an ask of our clerk as well, so we might as well use those as a planning commission. And then I did want to thank this commission for their great work in 2026. We did present our annual report and our goals to the township board as well, and we have a very busy week and month. We are, just to remind everybody, again, we will be here tomorrow night at 7 o'clock. My packet's here on the floor, but if you looked at it online, I think it's 253 pages, maybe, I don't know, huge packet, and we'll be sitting here in this room in a more casual setting, but really working through the master plan amendment, reviewing the feedback from the surveys. We thank everybody who participated in that. We did get better response than last time, so there's a plus. So anyways, really, really appreciate that. So a lot of work in this room. We have a very, very busy year as a planning commission, and then I want to thank trustee Wright for being here at our meeting, so that we can help communicate what this commission is doing, whether it's in recordings or by video, so thank you for being here as well. With that, our meeting is adjourned, or I take a motion to adjourn. At what time is it? 8 something?
8:32.
8:32. Is there a motion to adjourn?
Move to adjourn.
Second?
I'll second.
Thank you. With it, all in favor, signify by saying aye?
Aye.
Great. We'll see you here in the same room tomorrow night at 7 o'clock. Meeting's adjourned.